Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Mayor and Council meeting for the town of Northern. It is Monday, February 26, 2024, at 7:00. Please join us for a moment of silence, followed by a live reading.
We are the fight of the United States of America and cheer the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Thank you for citing on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. That was motion by Councilmember Ward. Second by Councilmember Green. All of them say aye. Followed by vote. Does the record reflect that the consent agenda passed unanimously with all councilmembers? Up next are items for approval. Just for everybody in attendance, a public comment period will be offered after discussion of the Mayor and Council for each item of approval. We have two this evening. Any person that may wish to speak will be given two minutes to be able to address the Mayor and Council regarding that specific item. Up next, up first is Agenda Item 2, motion 2024-11, the approval of the Chamber of Commerce alcohol permit request for 2024 events. And we have Ryan, Detective Director of the Chamber, Ryan Allen.
Thank you for having us, entertaining us this evening. We've got to do well. So I want to start off by saying that I'm really proud of what our board has put together in the last year, although we haven't seen a whole lot of each other. But we've got, I put out a poll, this is not the name of this immediately, I put out a poll last year, and I've had an overwhelming majority of those asking for more educational opportunities, more family-friendly opportunities, which I know is in line with what you guys presented. We have the educational opportunities global group. I'm happy to say we've completed the first half of a eight-week small business financial literacy board that has gone very well, it's been well-attended, and folks are very well. As far as family-friendly activities, we're getting into the spring celebration, after the race is coming up after that. And I would really like to value about other additional events that we have, because they're still very early development if we follow through with them. So what I've come to ask for today, on behalf of the Chamber and Mr. Cody Miller, who was not able to be here today unfortunately, who's a distiller for Forgotten Fifty, is that we would like to be able to recruit pre-mixed spirits, just to say drinks that have been prepared off-site in a responsible program manner, so that we can include another great program business in our events. So in the packet, you'll see that we've included a form that notes who would be preparing these drinks, who would be overseeing this, the target alcohol percentage, which while Mr. Miller and I were talking about this, we were aiming for something between five, fifteen, twenty percent cost, which is what you will find in craft beers and wines. No one's, no one's objective here is to get anyone's top step on Main Street. So even though this is new, this is really not something that's brand. Those that want to have a mixed drink while they're enjoying the events can do that at the Alere Hotel, they can do that at Sterling Cab, provided they stay on this premise. After they finish their drink, there's nothing that prevents them from mingling with the folks that are ready to set proper. So it's really what, what I'm trying to do is to make sure that I'm running this volume through the council of the town, to make sure that everyone's cool with this, that we're doing this in a responsible, accountable manner, that is consistent with how we've been operating our events these last two years. We just want to make sure that everything is only up and up, that people have eyes on it, that there's documentation, and that what we do, I hope, will ideally not affect the events themselves in any meaningful way.
Thank you. We also have a staff report in the packet, then it's on page 16, prepared by Economic Community Development and Economic Community Development Director Ivy Wells here to the council. Yeah, can you go over?
Yeah.
Can you go over the staff report?
Sure, sure. I was just reading, I didn't know you would, so sorry. Do you want me to start with this, read the entire thing?
Oh, you don't have to.
Okay.
Just if there are any high points outside of what Ryan just briefed the council on, and then if not, then we'll just open it up for discussion.
I don't, I don't see anything that I need to add to this report.
And then we'll bring it up for discussion among this body, and then public.
I think, I mean, in your recommendation, which I understand there's kind of two parts going on here, but for the first part, it says you spoke of the chief down in terms of where are these requests?
Correct.
Hi, Chief. Right, I'm here, right, yeah. So obviously, when you add liquor, it kind of has a potential change to the idea of it a little bit. And I was just wondering what Chief's thoughts are on these, at least this first recommendation, or this first motion of adding liquor to these four events. Do you have any concerns?
We always have a concern with alcohol events. Our biggest concern is duration. So again, having alcohol events all day long become a problem, or can be a problem. When we speak of the types of alcohol, it comes to percentages and things I really don't know about. You have five percent, beer and wine, what percentage, what type of liquor you're going to be selling, those become questions. In the end, the Alcohol Board will have a point to say.
So once, so if this is approved by Mr. Miller, could it, counting it? Yes, I'd take a letter of approval, and I would mail that off with an application. And to Chief's question about the alcohol percentages, it's generally speaking, you will find beers between five to ten percent, wines between ten, fifteen percent. And our, our goal, Mr. Miller and I's goal, is to keep that, that percentage in the fifty percent mark, so that that is in line with what is already being provided, which is the intent behind the form that we submitted. And I would, I would like to, since Forgotten Fifty is no confidence, I would like to find a way to include them and get them active. I will defer to the rest of the group. I do have concern with adding, adding liquor, so I'm curious to see if that's a good lead.
Sir, Ryan, are they standing under the Ointment, or are they also standard to the Chamber volunteers?
So that is, in the case of Jazz and Blues, which is what we initially just targeted, that individual event, we have a Maryland free-fa nonprofit festival forum, and that would permit Forgotten Fifty to present their, their own wares. With the other events, we're relying upon the county applications for nonprofit festivals, and that would require either me to have volunteers there, or if ideally, volunteers from Forgotten Fifty would like to volunteer their time and pour the drink, and, you know, maybe provide educational enlightenment on the product, that would be available, but most of the time we're relying on volunteers that are answerable to the Chamber.
But is the Chamber, Forgotten Fifty, stable?
Yes, we purchase, the way this works generally, is that we will purchase the product, and then we will sell tickets. People will exchange these tickets for a measure of product.
How do we handle a situation if other businesses decide to still, like, on this activity?
Well, we have-
I have someone I might have given about here.
Sure. I have a lot of vendors that would like to be part of our events. I have an Excel sheet that has filled up from vendor applications, and I would regard that the same way that I regard any of our vendor applications. I'm looking for those that are responsible, that are accountable, that are good partners. If you have a product, if someone came in and said that they wanted to sell fireworks, I certainly wouldn't let them do that. We want to find someone that's going to be a good fit for the events, someone whose product suits what we're pursuing, and responsible, accountable. We're, we're trying to partner with brands. We want to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to, and if we find partners that meet those criteria, then I have no problem considering them. If we have partners that do not meet those criteria, then we would not consider them. I mean, if you want to, if you want to make some gimp now, all about it, but if you, if you cut up, or we have reason to believe that you're not going to do as you say, or act in a responsible manner, we wouldn't want you.
I have a question. In regards to the volunteers, if you have pouring, distributing, how do you determine? I'm, I'm a little, I guess I'm not understanding that completely. Like, I've volunteered for a different organization with the pour, with the back. How, how did this work with liquor? You know, you-
The, yes. So one of the things that we're trying to eliminate is the chance of people actually mixing drinks on Main Street, right? That's, we don't want, we don't kind of run board shops, we don't want anybody that, like, out there trying to make the martini on main, as fun as that sounds, that's time-consuming, it's risky, there's just a lot of opportunities for companies to fail there. So what Kobe and I had discussed, using that form that I had mentioned, is that all of these drinks would be pre-made in-house. We would purchase product from Forgotten Fifty or their distributor, and then allow Forgotten Fifty's employees to prepare these drinks, go through the forms, say, all right, I'm going to include twenty ounces of, I'm going to include however much cranberry juice, however much whatever else. Document that on this form, have a manager double check it, double check their math, and make sure that the final product is made in these county standards, and is meeting this target ADB, so that we do not have folks that are drinking an extremely strong cocktail on Main Street, and, you know, putting their own health and safety and everyone else's risk.
Okay, because for me, that's the, that's where concern comes in the plane. Not that I am looking to take away another business's opportunity, but all I'm hearing now is beer, wine, and liquor. I feel like I'm almost at the close. There's, there's, I'm not, and I'm a little nervous that somebody's gonna be pouring heavy. That's what-
That is exactly the thing that Kobe and I talked about, and exactly the thing we're hoping to eliminate by providing this process as assurance of compliance, like, letting you know we're going to do what we say we're going to do.
I don't understand. I don't understand exactly what the request is. This sale of alcohol is in addition to what is already available downtown.
That's correct.
And that, now, the Chamber, in this case, would become a provider of alcohol.
Yeah, I mean, we, we aren't-
The, the Chamber would be the pastor for Forgotten Fifty and, and the other facility.
So, hold on. The Mayor and Council have previously approved, and I'd be correct in front of all, beer and wine as an alcohol-related event, and we approved our, our slate of alcohol-related events. The request before us this evening is to change that request to allow liquor.
To allow, to allow liquor in addition to what is already available downtown, because just, just like you said, someone who goes to the Alere Hotel and drinks a mixed drink.
And I, I would-
Do we, do we, do we really need this, or is this a way to include those businesses? Is this a way to have those businesses sell their wares downtown in, in addition to the other facilities?
Yes, sir, that, that's the objective, is to be able to include Forgotten Fifty or other distilleries in the region.
Is there any further before we go into public comment?
Well, I just want, I hear all the concerns, and I think the concerns are, to admit, my interest in presenting it, I think the concerns are, that's it. I was going to see if the group, because I'm not, I have to admit, I'm not comfortable recruiting all four of these events without knowing how the first one goes. So I was going to ask the, I know we're here in the public, to consider approving the first event in May, and then having the Chamber come back. And first of all, if you have a good, I think there are, probably would be concerns from other businesses, I would be curious what their impact is on May, where mixed drinks are sold on the street, rather than having to go to the restaurant bar. So, and then public safety, it would allow some opportunities to review, because it's, you know, we have May, May fourth, this Jazz and Blues, wine and brews, which I hope doesn't change the booze.
I cannot make that name anymore.
Three months, I, that would give us a few months to kind of review and see how things go. But I know we're here in the public, that's sort of a potential compromise.
Sorry, I have a couple just more questions. I, I would be willing to go with that. I think that's a good, good move forward, if the, if that's how it would decide. And I still want to hear from the public, of course, but I do have one more question. Now, when you say prepackaged mixed drink, what I'm thinking of, you know, I've been out there most of the time, and like I'm saying, Patrick's saying, some bars have already pre-mixed, they were IV bags, but anyway, so mixed, and then you combine, is that what we're like, not IV, is that what we're like? Like a, you say prepackaged, what does that mean? So I'm, I'm, as far as the specific packaging, I would have to defer to Mr. Miller. I, I don't know what's available to him in that regard. What I do know, what we did talk about, is making sure that whatever it is that is prepared meets the, the standards of a, of ADB mixed drink, and is prepared in a way so that anyone can just pour a draft. One thing that we did talk about, and I'm actually glad to remind you of that, was that he had, he had brought up the potential of kegging of these drinks, which would make it functionally, kegging, to put it in a keg, would make it functionally no different than, like, pouring a draft here.
As long as the entire keg is, of course, measured correctly, because I'm not-
Yes, assuming, of course, that when they prepare it, that the ADB is accurate, yes.
Just another question. I'm trying to get clarity on the alcohol percentage. So you're saying the alcohol percentage could be up to fifteen percent?
Yes, sir. The, the mixed drink percentage is the target that we were looking at, is to match that of beer and wine, so anywhere from five, which seems extremely low for this, to fifteen percent. And I don't want to say about, because, again, I'm, I'm not a bartender, I would, I would love to give you very specific information on that, but the, the goal numbers that we had discussed, and I don't know if it's, were up to fifteen percent.
And, um-
It's not like a nice bourbon.
I, I understand, I mean, like, but, but fifteen percent is not, a typical beer could be five to six percent, so we're looking at a multiple of that.
You might, depending on the craft beers that are provided at any of our events, you can be looking at anywhere from five percent to nine percent to eleven percent if you're getting some sort of, like, a barley wine or a special. Beer, beer percentage is, I'm sure that Mr. Miller can go and get a deal on that, but they can get very-
I will say, I mean, before we open it up for public comment, I think that we, we talk about the, the image that Berlin wants to portray, we talk about the, the family friendliness, we talk about the nice events, where, I mean, the chief brings up public safety, that's a concern, but also the, the public perception of Berlin, Berlin's events, and how does this change that, that view of Berlin?
My hope is that it has zero impact, and, and I know that that stinks like optimism, as I initially mentioned, towards the fans' presence, that's something that we're really, really looking to lean in on. These events already exist, the access to these drinks already exists, albeit in, I'm establishing this adjacent to the events. And my hope is just to be able to include one more business in what we're doing, and the reason that we're approaching this the way that we are, is because we want to make sure that we're accountable, that we're on top of this, that we're making sure that public safety is not jeopardized, the council image is not jeopardized. These are the things that we take every bit as seriously as you do.
Ryan, just to clarify one point, according to what you said, you're not talking about individual packaged products, you're talking about a large container, such as a keg?
Correct.
That the volunteers would pour?
Yes, sir.
Well, that was an option. The other one was, you weren't aware of what packaging you would use.
Yes, the one thing that we did discuss was kegging, but as far as what specifically will be selected, what, what you will go through, that I can't say with certainty, and I don't want to speak on this path.
Where would you station this?
If you've been to the events on Main Street previously, you see that depending on the event, it shifts a little bit, but for Jazz and Blues, if that's the primary option, what we did last year was have a number of beer and wine vendors interspersed with art vendors up and down Main Street, allowing those, or really forcing those to have to move the stages when, like, music alternate, and when the stage goes from the north end of Main Street to the south, the crowd will follow, but it's, this is giving exposure to all of the different vendors and brewers that are coming out, and to the, the artists and vendors as well.
All right, can I continue with all the rest?
So I've heard talk about prepackaged and kegs. What comes to my mind is, you know, if you've gone to Secrets, or if you've gone to one of, an outdoor event, sometimes I'll have a pre-mixed punch, and you see it, it's kind of in a clear container, and it's already, it already has the alcohol pour measured in it, it already has the mixer in it, and you basically just hit the cup and you kind of pour it in. So whoever's doing the pour is not deciding how much alcohol goes in, they're just deciding on what, how, how much to fill the cup. And, you know, I'm sure that the cups will be managed to an appropriate size. So that's what I'm picturing in my mind, I think, because that, that's the only thing that would make sense, to do it that way.
That's, that's very close to what we're talking about, and, you know, put ice in the cup, pour the drink over the ice, and pop trouble.
Can these stations would be manned by volunteers?
Yes, sir. That's very likely the case.
Before we open it up for public comment, anyone from the public that would like to address the Mayor and Council regarding motion 2024-11, you can stand there, you can stand there. Regarding motion 2024-11, stand, and we'll recognize you from there, that way we have the Chamber here as well. Anyone?
I will.
Got it.
Cindy Krempel, I'm the president of the Chamber Board, and to answer the question about, you know, that liquor is served in other stores on Main Street and restaurants, so is beer and wine, so we can't, we really probably shouldn't consider that, you know, in the, in the vote, or in your decision, since they're, they're sold everywhere also. And as far as the alcohol content is concerned, I know that most beers, and Matt can probably attest to this, can go up to fourteen percent, can't they? Like some, yeah. And a lot of wines hover between twelve and fifteen percent, which I think a lot of people don't realize that either. Not that I'm an expert on alcohol, but anyway, I think that this is a, a good opportunity for the Chamber, you know, to make a little more money, and it's not anything different than we're already doing, except for the type of alcohol that's involved. Okay?
So, you want to know? There is a comment that has popped up on the Facebook feed that I think is, is from Mr. Miller, indicating we'd be kegging the, sorry, pre-batch cocktails, and no cocktails would go above ten percent.
So technically, that makes you go a lot? Nice, sir. Yeah, I mean, that's like beer, right? An average beer, right?
Would we impose that as well on wine and beer? Would we impose that same limit on wine and beer?
Oh.
So I, I think really probably the, the prejudice about it is that it is liquor and not wine and beer, although all other things being equal, you know what I mean?
I hear, I hear what you're saying. I think for me, it's not so much that, it's just in my head, when I'm hearing beer, wine, and liquor, my brain is hearing, we're at the bar. You know what I mean? Not that that's, that's me, that's, that's how I see it, and I'm not saying that that's a bad or a good, but I'm, when I hear that, I think the bar, you know what I mean? And I feel like, rather than just going to pour the volunteer, not that I'm saying that your volunteers don't know what they're doing, because like I said, I've done this thing before, but I've never done it with a cane of liquor, and that would scare me personally. But not saying that they aren't responsible, but if Kobe is saying that he's going to keep his percentage lower, on somebody, a novice like me, it would make me feel more comfortable knowing that even if I'm pouring, and my best buddy comes around, and he says, you know, look, look me up, I can't give you any words than I'm giving anybody, yeah. You know what I'm saying? That's how, that's how I would be.
I don't know if everybody understands also that there are people on our board and in our volunteers who are trained, who are actually trained, and get, Brian, is it a certification, or?
Tips.
Tips. They're tips certified. So they are aware of all of those limitations and-
So they're basically training the same man as a bartender, right? That's what you're teaching them.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
They are.
I, I hold that, and on our, our state permit, we're obligated to have these two people onsite that aren't certifiable, or are certified in some sort of preventative education in that department, and we do, and we have.
And you guys, I mean, I know that you have, but you will continue if you need to cut somebody off right out there at the scene, because you got the same as they would inside. You know that whoever comes out and feels, I'm gonna get a little extra on the streets, then I would say if I were in the bar, you guys will cut them off.
Yeah, no, no one, no one wants to deal with the fallout of that, that's, like I said, we, we're worried about how many local visitors do.
Ryan, would you, if this were to pass under speed recognition, certain amount of one of them, would you be acceptable to have a caveat out there that alcohol content would not exceed ten percent?
Would, Mr. Baldwin, would, would you read what Kobe wrote again, just so that I'm unclear what he said, because?
We will be kegging the pre-batch cocktails, and no cocktails will go above ten percent ADB.
No cocktails?
That's what he indicates.
If that's what he says he can do, then I'll stand by my man.
And we'll have the same ten percent for beer and wine as well? And we'll have the same ten percent for beer and wine as well?
That might, that might carry.
You're not gonna have wine with ten percent?
Wine.
Well, I think that the topic before the council this evening is whether or not to allow the liquor in the town event as is denoted out of the permit, um, which would be adding liquor. And then the, um, Forgotten Fifty has commented saying that they can, they don't intend to exceed ten percent. I don't think that that's. Okay, yeah, I mean, you conclude that in the motion, but, um, it would only include, unless amended, it would only include the edition of liquor. I want to get to anybody else in the public. Uh, you want to defer to ladies first?
So I just want Lauren George Rich twenty, or, um, South Main Street. Just to clarify, because it sounds like there's some miscommunication on what typical alcohol percentages are. A typical glass of white wine is gonna run you twelve to fifteen percent. So when you're capping out a liquor cocktail at ten percent, it's significantly, significantly less alcoholic than a glass of wine. And it's all gonna be pre batched, is my understanding. So I just feel like it's really limiting to those businesses that want to serve alcohol of a stronger original variety. Like it's being diluted down. So I feel like you're really limiting them if you're putting a cap at ten percent when we're already serving wine and everyone's okay with that.
Thank you. Name and.
Uh, Matt Furrier, uh, Burley Oak. Uh, just for further clarification on that, like what Lauren was saying, those cocktails will also probably be poured into a glass of ice. So whereas you're getting a, a beer or a wine and you're getting almost sixteen ounces, twelve, sixteen ounces, that'll be poured over ice. So you're probably only getting six ounces of that drink anyway. So it's gonna be far less of volume. So it may be a higher percentage of alcohol, but it's gonna be less of the volume that they're gonna be drinking with that. And I also, you know, just from, excuse me, from, excuse me, uh, from the alcohol side, you know, I would encourage this to go through as well, um, for the fact of, you know, uh, Mayor was saying about, you know, how this is gonna reflect on the town and the events. For twelve years, we've been pouring beer down there and there's constantly people asking for more and more and more stuff. So I, I think it's gonna positively benefit. Uh, I don't think people are gonna drink as much because it is gonna be a liquor based cocktail and they're gonna have choice of beer, wine or liquor. So you're now offering to the public more of a choice. So people are gonna be happier with coming to that event and, and, you know, partaking in whatever. Uh, so that's just my two cents.
Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council regarding item number four? If, um, we're not for the public, you're departmental, so we'll close the, uh, public comment. Sorry. Now we'll go over to the staff.
Just, just sitting here and listening to what everyone is saying, I also, one of the things that I always like to say is perception is everything. So the way the event will be marketed and the way that the chamber has always marketed their events are very classy. They're high end. Forgotten Fifty is a high end distillery. It's not, it, it, it's not like it's going to be, um, uh, an event that is going to be promoted as a drunk fest. It's, it's an art event. It's a, it's a just a classy event. And I think the way that it's going to be promoted, as we all promote Berlin events, the chamber included, the museum, all of our events are very, they're, they're upscale events. They're not trashy. And I think that shows in the marketing of it, the way that the ad is designed, the wording of it. I think that all matters. So, um, always remember perception is everything.
So, well, turn it up for actually the board of council.
Well, like I said at the beginning of this, I, I do, um, for actually is a member of our, of our town and I do this for you. So I do, um, want to finally get them involved in our events and the chamber events. So, um,
So I appreciate everyone's comments. I think, um, I still, my level will still be to approve the, not really as tied into the percentages, but we've heard from the distiller himself saying it's gonna make it ten percent. But I really didn't have that concern. It was really more of a perception and, um, impact, um, on our community. So I would still like to revise the motion that's before us, um, to only include the, um, jazz and blues event on May fourth and then ask the, uh, chamber and public safety officials and Ivy as well to just, um, you know, report back to us. This should buy me plenty of time to go before the license board, this is so many months in between. You know, I feel very much eased with this. If we could just do the, the one event, um, somebody could just approve. I guess it's really good to revise twenty twenty four dash eleven, just to include jazz and blues on May fourth.
So the motion to approve motion, amended motion twenty twenty four dash eleven, ten second, the council member Horace. The motion is just for item number one, um, seven, two, three, and four, it's for.
Max, please.
Yes, please.
Before you get going, the way this motion reads is that alcohol is known as beer, wine and liquor. So by just reading it to jazz and blues, are they gonna have to request beer and wine for all the other events again?
They, they're already done. Uh, they have beer and wine. I think this only says the asterisk in those.
This is all four events and those beer, wine and motion?
Um, the motion, uh, how about the motion reads that it is for amended twenty twenty four dash eleven, only altering item number one because two, three and four have already been passed with.
Beer and wine, sure. Revised motion to do that.
And then two is there's still the second by cost of order.
There is still the second.
Okay. And then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that the amended motion twenty twenty four dash eleven, including just an amendment item number one, uh, to include, uh, liquor passes four to one with Vice President Barilla in opposition. I think, wanna stay seated for the second as well? Uh, no, no, no one. Uh, up next is agenda item two B, motion twenty twenty four dash twelve, approving, uh, for Burley Oak Brewing Company to sell alcohol to be consumed on the premises of the Berlin Farmers Market and during events approved by the mayor and council for the sale or consumption of alcohol. We have Burley Oak's, uh, director of sales.
Matt Furrier here with us.
Thank you.
Is that my title?
What's that? Well, that's what it is here. What do you, what do you wanna be? I've just managed all things, uh, but. So thank you for being here with us this evening. Do you wanna just fill in the council on what your request is? And then we'll go over again to economic development and staff report.
Uh, yeah, just, um, we have an office site, print this, um, license permit, whatever, uh, we call it, um, to allow us to pour at farmers markets, samples and sell packaged goods to go. Not to be consumed on premise at the farmer's market, but that would be, you know, hey, I want to say a pack of this beer to go. Here you go, uh, just like any other person at the farmer's market. This license was originally intended for all farmers markets, so it includes, basically, under the license, we would be able to do any farmer's market throughout the state of Maryland, including around the state fair, um, any of the larger fairs like that, uh, that has that. But it also allows for, um, the sale of samples, well, not sale samples, the samples, the sale of, um, on premise consumption and package to go at up to thirty additional events that aren't alcohol related events, um, which is down with the jazz and blues, uh, Oktoberfest, you know, for more of the arts. So it's just permission for us to allow us to jump with our vans and basically sell as it's going through the chamber now. Which is about going through the chamber.
And just to be clear on the request, it's two separate requests, where the request is for the farmer's market and then also potential.
The events, because the, the, um, the forms have to be sent into the state of Maryland, um, for their approval of the event and also sent to the, uh, West County Control Board, um, a month ahead of, a month ahead of what the scheduled event is. Uh, so I was just getting them all together at one time, so they can all be sent out at one time.
Let's go over to economic, community development for the staff report. Anything to add?
I have nothing to add at this time. Thank you. Discussion by the council.
Ivy, would this opportunity be available to any, uh, beer producer with an off type of license license?
It's, yes.
Will they have to come in with the same?
So, so currently at the Berlin Farmers Market, uh, there's Buzz Meterie and Lion Rum are allowed to sell off premise. They're allowed to sell to be consumed off premises. There's no alcohol permit to consume during the farmer's market right now. So anyone, as long as, because I have to sign off on those state permits, they have to send it to the state owner to be able to sell away from their location. So Forgotten, for this year, for the farmer's market, we've received requests from Forgotten Fifty to be able to sell packaged goods to be taken home, just like Lion Rum does. Um, the new Berlin Beer Company, they've also submitted. Um, but they haven't, they haven't asked to be able for the public to consume on premises. This is separate. This is a separate request from Burley Oak.
So the, let's just be clear, so they're writing the same page. The request to be able to do what Lion Rum does and what the Buzz Meterie does at the farmer's market, to be handled at the staff level?
Oh, yeah.
So the request is not for that this evening?
Correct.
Because you can go through Ivy's office for that request for the farmer's market.
Right.
But I saw it to send in that paperwork to the state saying that we're going to be there going now.
So then the subsequent request, it is for the, that.
Yes.
But you, you're adding, you're providing samples, so, so there will be consumption on site.
That's already done with Lion Rum and with.
Samples are okay, you just can't.
Then the sample cups are.
You can't have a sample this big.
Two ounce, two ounce sample cup.
So I don't know what we're being asked. Have, have your request is the same as those other events?
Basically, I, is, the request is for us to be allowed to do that. The, the forms have to be signed, um, by the mayor saying that it's okay, the, the, us to be on that property. So we're gonna do that.
Page twenty nine should be revised to go to economic development.
And so you're not asking to consume, Matt? Is that what I'm understanding at the farmer's market?
For the farmer's market, it's packaged to go and then provided for the sample.
That's, that's consumption, right?
No, 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 that's the same as what Lion Rum and the Buzz Meterie are doing. They're allowed to have a sample to.
It's not.
Providing a sample is consumption.
Hold on, hold on, Mark. We're, we're talking to everyone. Gospel, do you have something you wanna add to?
How was providing a sample my consumption?
You're the legal expert. Okay, if you call it consumption, then therefore, um.
They've asked for consumption at the farmer's market, what the motion says.
So can I, um, just jump in here a second. Let's just go this on the farmer's market, or, or right this second. So you're, the motion states exceptions for sale and consumption of Burley Oak Brewing Company beer and just focusing on the farmer's market.
Okay.
So you're asking to be able to offer a sample and they can first purchase product to take home or in, in.
Correct.
Okay. And that is what Buzz Meterie does, that's what other vendors do now. And that's all you're asking for the farmer?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, not, we're not pouring, um, sixteen ounce pint for them to walk around the farmer's market.
So then my question to the group is, do you want to continue to handle those at the staff level? Or would you like a change in the process for those to be approved here?
Well, I think.
I think that this can be handled at the staff.
Uh, I think, well, uh, kind of, sorta, I'm, I'm a little.
The farmer's market, what?
Yeah, I'm just feeling like the farmer's right now. I, I'm a little concerned about the word consumption. And I'm wondering if, uh, the motion would be amended somehow. The motion authorized the exception for sale and consumption of samples of Berlin Oak beer, da, 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 da.
My recommendation on the farmer's market, unless you all wanna be continuously approving them before they, before staff signs it, kick this back to Ivy, page number twenty nine. They follow the same rules as everybody else regarding.
But the farmer's market, in my, in my opinion, I'm concerned with these other events.
Yes, separate issues is what I'm saying. The farmer's market goes page twenty nine's application goes diving and follow the rules that Lion Rum follows and then anybody else as well as Buzz Meterie. So now let's say that the motion only is regarding the jazz and blues request, small town throwdown request, which is page thirty one, thirty three. From the Federalist Commission, page thirty five, October, page thirty seven, taking four requests.
After these, uh, I don't think, but I'm, I'm. These, uh, these now, these are four other event requests. Are you looking for exclusivity to sell your product at these events?
Correct. Basically, just what we're doing currently for the past twelve years at these events, just selling it on our own as opposed to selling it to technically distributor of as the chamber and then chamber collecting money.
For clarification, all sales go to the chamber currently.
Correct. Right.
And approval goes through the town and the county. The process will be different and you'll be allowing other vendors, whoever they wish to come before you, to go ahead and ask the question, can we sell one of them? Would you buy the vendor space for these guys? You would actually be asking that to the chamber, because will they be allowing them a space? Because we're, we're missing it, because the event, if it's sponsored by the chamber, the chamber controls through, should be the vendors. Other people don't decide that for them.
So really shouldn't you be asking the chamber this question, other than it must be approved to itself?
Well, how about we ask the chamber?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I'm in agreement with Chief Dowling. Uh, what I think is being asked and is to go around the vendor approval process that I was detailing just a few moments ago.
So why is that happening? Why is that?
Uh, to be honest, uh, just the past events have been limited in, in, basically it was purchased from us. The, then the participants at the festivals are mad at Burley Oak because we're out of products and we have the town because, hey, I came here on a ticket, there's no more Burley Oak. I have to go buy a natural length of the ticket that I could have had the compressed beer load from.
So you're saying we provision out more alcohol?
We would be able to provide as much as could be sold. Uh, so we wouldn't run it. It would be a continuous supply.
But you wouldn't be sharing the profit with the chamber?
We can look at that then, we can look at that. And once again, this is, this is more of a protection for us to be able to, you know, once again, provide, you know, income for the twenty people that work for us. You know, if we're limited in what we can sell, then.
I understand that, but at the same time, it's also their event. They're willing to volunteer.
Correct.
Putting in all the hours that we can have.
And with this, we wouldn't, we would, we would have our own volunteers to.
Well, yeah.
Right.
They should have say on who, they should make, they should benefit from who bands at that.
Correct.
So, so, so you're circumventing the authority of the chamber over these events?
I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot.
Right.
It sounds like us. It sounds like you're, you're cutting out the people who are going to basically regulate how much is there and what's being done so that the customer who wants to have more and more and more can be happy and get whatever he wants. When he could all in all that charlie, close up shop and go around the corner to Burley Oak and buy what else he needs. That's how I'm looking at that part, because that's what we're talking about.
I mean, not to that, right, not to that degree, but, um, yes, it would be providing, you know, because once again, you have customers.
Yeah.
In the street that are getting mad at the wrong entity at that time. They're getting mad at the town because they, you know, if I'm just here visiting a festival, I don't know that it's a chamber event, a burly event, a town event. It's all town. So, you know. So, you know, in, in the previous, you know, um, we talked about how it's going to affect the public perception of that event. It's been negatively affecting the public perception of those events with not having that product.
And just for clarity, the way you explained it when we talked about this last year for October Festival was you were getting, um, negative brand recognition as far as your entity goes.
Correct.
When it came to supply, when you have no, uh.
Control.
Control over supply. Now, just to be clear, this decision does not rest in the mayor's office, this rests really at the council level, which is why it's here. The request came in and that, of course, comes to this level for that.
Yeah, just, Matt, I'm comfortable with sending it to the staff levels of the farmers market. As far as the other four events, I don't feel comfortable, um, you just come out, I think you need to go with the chamber to make that happen.
So, it is council comment and then we will open it up to the public, so is there any other comment?
I would, I'd really, to say, for group J, I just feel like, um, this is going around, there's guys that, that the chamber spends a lot of time in every of the fair events, you know, the H C. I, I feel it's inappropriate for us frankly to, um, be hurting them anyway, frankly. But certainly about the C, um, of better relationship frankly, um, you know, just one question to report. So, are you saying that all the events that you've been at in the past, not a lot to say, that most of the events you've been at in the past, you're running out of product?
Yes.
Everyone?
Uh, the past couple of years, yes, definitely.
And then the customer, the, um, visitors are coming up with their ticket and you're telling them, we're out.
Definitely.
To the domestic.
Correct.
So, historically, are you providing the same level of quantity each year?
Um, it's dropped for the past couple of years.
Why?
Um, their budget.
But if you're running out?
I, I agree. And that's, you know, once again, this, these, these are just a, a way for us to protect ourselves and be able to do that without hurting our brand still legally through what the state of Maryland has set forth to be in the area.
Now, but Councilmember Nerd is probably a good point, too. You said that your volume to, Councilmember Green said that demand stayed the same and you were maxing out as far as selling out your lot of quantity.
Right, demand, demand's actually gone up.
Demand's been there and then I think Councilmember Nerd just said, the supply has gone down, why is that?
Uh, just the, the budget of the chamber and what they're aligning to each of the alcohol dispenser, you know, through us Buzz Meterie, you know, Shore, uh, Berlin Beer Company.
So, it's being split across town entities? It's like, uh, some, uh, craft brewers or, um, I guess it's a one or a.
Again, I guess the question for the chamber, not for any.
Well, no, I'm, I'm asking about, uh, what the.
They actually buy.
I understand, but if he, if he was providing the supply, I'm wondering why supply went down, is it?
No, I just, when you say the chamber is purchasing front and that's the supply that they have, that's not in his.
I understand, but what I'm trying to understand is, like Councilmember Nerd just said, why it's diminished? Is it diminished because the share, market share, and it can go to you all as well? Is the market share being split between other town entities or is it being split somewhere else? That's what I'm asking.
Right, from, from my point of view, it's being split. Each, each town entity has the same budget, so we'll just say a hundred dollars. So, we have a hundred dollars, we already have a hundred dollars, um, we got fifty, for our beer company, everybody has a hundred dollars. But then there's also outside, you know, carry distributors, eastern short distributors coming in, they're getting a hundred dollars, a hundred dollars. Where it's not a town of Berlin business, it's an outside distributor bringing in product as well. And that's where the majority of the frustration for the, the customer comes from. Because craft beer runs out, I bought a ticket, you know, because you're not just buying one ticket and going, you know, and go back and get another ticket, you get five tickets or whatever. You go back and, oh, there's no more craft beer, I have to go and have to get another one that I can just go into, some powder, pay a dollar for it. You know, just pay five dollars for a ticket, then get it back.
Now, to the chamber, is there, is there a way to spread out your market share? You all were just talking about Berlin businesses, is there a way to spread that market share out to Berlin specific craft breweries or?
What it is that we did, uh, last year, Jazz and Blues was essentially the only large event that we had through the entirety of last year. The only exception to that, I think, would be the, uh, Small Town Throwdown, which was a much smaller event, and then New Year's, which hardly happened for us. The plan that we had, uh, that we went through with for Jazz and Blues was to allot a dollar amount to each of our providers, each of the brewers, which included Burley Oak, Buzz Meterie, Evolution, um, can't remember off the top of my head, but we had a lot of folks and what used to be, uh, essentially Burley Oak, uh, coming up, setting up shop and, so, sending us a bill afterwards. Part of this accountability was us requesting that we have everything in writing beforehand, that we have, that we know what it is that we're going to be purchasing and at, and at what rate. We're trying to keep our ducks in a row and we're trying to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. And Burley Oak went from being the sole provider and taking anywhere from, I'm bullparking here, anywhere from three to five thousand dollars home to taking five thou, five hundred to a thousand dollars home. And yes, uh, we've been using carry distributors, uh, at about forty to fifty dollars less per keg and with people asking for moderate domestic drafts. Uh, there's some folks that don't care for craft beers. That was the right decision to make, saved us a bunch of money, which is part of what we're doing so that we can roll money into other projects. Yeah, uh, they, Burley Oak went from being an only child to a sibling and I think that's where a lot of the stress came from.
Look, Ryan, in all fairness, I mean, a lot of people do love craft beer.
They do.
It seems like you two could sit down at the table, we're at a financial arrangement that usually members both need, so they could be happy. But that's something you would have to engage in.
I agree entirely and the only, the only time that this was a, a discussion was about this time last year when we were setting up Jazz and Blues. Fiddlers?
And October, because you, you called and back called and we had a long talk about you two having a conversation together to prevent something like this.
That's right.
And, and I thought things went well as far as the conversation went, because now this is the next time that it's coming back up. Is there a way that you, you all can make good and find a way to sell Berlin's, uh, craft beverages, like what we just approved yourself to go?
Yeah, that's.
At the Berlin event?
That's what we're trying to do. I've been drafting up stuff for Jazz and Blues this morning, but I, I gotta make sure that everything's functioning the way it's supposed to be. And make sure I'm dealing with folks that are operating in good faith.
Because, Matt, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but when you talked to me about this last year, you said you were willing to donate everything back to another nonprofit.
Yeah.
So, is it about the money or is it about the, the product and fulfilling the demand?
It's about the product and fulfilling the demand. I mean, we, we, you know, even like Ryan said, you know, we went from selling three to five thousand dollars to the chamber for these events. The chamber's marking that up, you know, probably thirty percent, so they're making thirty percent more on that, you know, than any other bar buying beer we do. So, it's not like they're not making, you know, money on that. And to go from three to five thousand dollars to five hundred to a thousand dollars, you know, once again, I have to protect the twenty people that work for me financially. I can still obviously donate money back to town, so if we sell five thousand dollars at a festival, we can absolutely look at what that number would be to go back to Martin Entertainment, the early chamber or, or whatever entity is, is chosen. But it's, you know, and, and so, but what I said, you know, if you save a lot of money by buying, they'll live life after life. So, if, if that's.
But my question's not us trying to approve these circumvented chamber. My question was to get you all to understand publicly that you say that it's not about the money. You say that you want to make money in the event so that you can roll it into other projects. It sounds like a, a happy couple to me, yeah. So, I'm struggling to figure out where the unhappiness is coming from. Of course, it would send you back to be happy together and work together.
Right, I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I was looking at, at that, at, you know, once again, this is just a backup plan to not have a problem. You know, when I say that we're not worried about the money, we're not worried about making all of the money, you know, I'm not worried about giving something back. We're worried about selling it to the chamber. I do have to make money and like you said, going from five thousand dollars at a festival to five hundred dollars at a festival, that's a reason.
But it's also reasonable to understand that there are more players in the space now locally, as in Berlin specific businesses.
Right.
And that a reasonable market share of Berlin businesses would be understood.
Right, and I'm, I'm fully happy with all these festivals being Berlin centric and be Berlin Beer Company, Forgotten Fifty, Buzz Meterie. I mean, we, so basically the town Berlin has two breweries now. Town Berlin has a distillery, we're distilling as well. Town Berlin has a cider, or not cider, a beer here. So, you know, we have all that already in the town, that's what people come to town for. They can get a little light at any bar across the country. So, you know, I disagree with that notion that people are coming to these events looking for public.
All right, anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor and council regarding motion twenty-four dash twelve? Yes, just name and street name, please.
Yes, uh, my name is Jim Buckley and I live on one oh five Buckingham Road. My concern is, I, I'm sorry, this, I, I'm going, but my concern that if I'm wrong, if this is irrelevant, shut me down, tell me to sit down. I'm concerned about the selling of beer at the farmers market. I've always looked at the farmers market as a family event. You go on at nine o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock in the morning, there's an awful lot of kids there, okay? People have their dogs there, there's kids in wagons, they're walking around getting pastries and blah, blah, blah. I'm not excited about the, uh, rum people there, but it's, it's, it's there and I can't do anything about that, okay? Because she is giving samples, which I'm glad Mr. Gaskell brought up when he did. The Buzz Meterie, I kind of overlooked them because I think it's cool to watch the bees. So, you know, I, I forget that they're selling alcoholic beverages. But as far as, as, as more alcoholic beverages being provided at the farmers market, I think, I, I, I hope I'm not alone having a problem with that, okay? Now, you say you want to give a sample. Well, I could go down to the Burley Oak and get a sample. It costs me ten bucks to have a flight, which is about eight ounces of beer, okay? Now, if you're going to serve samples, okay, are we going to limit that? Are we going to keep it to one ounce? Or are we just going to say no? I, I don't think it's appropriate at the farmers market. Now, he says he wants to sell his product, so what are you going to do? Stack up twenty-five cases of beer there and make a little castle? And, and, I, I just think it's inappropriate. And, and I, I hope that other people will jump on board and say that. The other concern I had was, uh, he opens, uh, the, the Burley Oak opens at eleven o'clock. I don't know a whole lot of people without problems that are having a beer or tasting beer at nine o'clock in the morning. And I, 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 I just don't think it's appropriate. Now, if, if you're one of those that, you know, go after the wolf the bitch of the night before, more power to you. But, uh, then go, then go to an appropriate place to take care of that. But, you know, I'm not trying to diss the Burley Oak, I like their beer, okay? I do frequent there, uh, occasionally, but I think there's just a limit on where it should be and when it should be. Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, wish to address the mayor and council, just name and street name, please?
Yeah, Gabe Purnell, I wasn't going to say nothing, but the more I sit there, it agitates me. I really feel we're dealing with a slippery slope. As I see this thing, it's going, where is it going to stop? That's all I gotta say.
Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council, uh, we've got two babies, please. Um, over here with the left.
Go ahead.
Uh, Lindsay George, one oh eighteen Gold Run, I also work at Burley Oak. And, um, I would agree that, I think that, I think that the last part of this conversation kind of came back to wanting to get back to being more of a Berlin centered, um, business provider for, if we're looking at that, instead of going maybe outside of Berlin. And that, I think that goes with any business here in Berlin, not just alcohol, but anything that is involved in any of these events. I think that all of us are more than willing to work on trying to come up with a solution so that everybody can be happy between both the chamber and the town council and all the businesses involved. But I think we really have to realize that there are so many more and more businesses that are coming on board and that are same businesses in the same town. And that if we all want to try to work together, I think that would be the best way to do it. I, I would say to comment to the one that you just talked about not having beer or not allowing for us to have, um, anything at the, um. Farmers market, thank you. Um, then if that's the case, then I think that we would have to take away that for everybody. I don't think that we can just say, or anybody else says, for, I mean, we're going to say that for anybody else, it's also putting in applications for that, I don't, you know. I think we have to look at it for fairness for everyone that is trying to do that.
Adam Davis, twenty, uh, twenty-three South Main, um, is to speak on behalf of the president and, uh, future business owner here in town with Berlin Beer Company, as well as a member of the Chamber of Commerce. I would agree with Lindsay, I think this is an all or none kind of proposition here in terms of having approval from Burley Oak Brewing Company to sell this should be any similarly licensed holder in the downtown Berlin area. So, if, I'm not here to try to influence your emotion on this or anything, but if this is, this should be an all or, or none conversation, not just allowing one entity to do this and then hear from the other three or four entities and waste all of our time doing this three more times, you know? An all or none kind of answer should be discussed here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the mayor and council? Okay, uh, close the public comment period and seek any, uh, approval or motion by the council.
I, I have, I have a couple of questions, but, um, so, I, I want to be attentive. So, um, everybody in the public spoke, I agree with a little bit of each of what everyone said, I'm not going to say that. But, um, so the folks that do do the samples, that is part of their permit, right? Right?
State license.
That's part of their state license. So, you already have that and you will have that.
Right.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay. So, my, uh, my, this is why I wanted to talk about the, the word assumption. If we're going to throwback the farmers market to, uh, staff, which was discussed earlier, um, I'm speaking for, um, myself, I'm, I agree that it's probably going to have to look at how we do that. It's probably, yeah, to be fair and equitable, it should be a discussion of all or nothing. Either some do samples or there's a size limit or something like that. I'm going to defer that, uh, purely to the director today, that's on the next staff. Uh, and in accordance with whatever their, your, your companies. I am, I would be, well, that's on the next staff. The, um, the events, I, I really concur with, with my understanding of what the group is, where. The events, I really concur with my understanding of what the group is, where Burle Oke should... A lot of this discussion, in my opinion, should have been with the chamber. And I don't know, I'm not here to say why it didn't or why it's not or whatnot.
I can say that because the request came and the real decision is here with this body. The request came into the office about signing these forms. And as with when the chamber submits their alcohol requests or the American Legion does, everything comes here. It's approval of this body. That's why it's here before the state.
If I can answer, I'm sorry, if I can answer your job. So the state license requires for the sampling to be one fluid ounce for each operator's beer, one fluid ounce for wine, and a quarter ounce for lagers. So that's the state law, so it should be just an ounce.
So everybody that does that follows that.
Yes, if I may, so I've, obviously, I've been to the farmer's market and have seen the samples that are given out. Remember that samples are free, so no one's trying to pour heavy samples. They're usually a half of a sip of a sample, just so you can kind of wet your tongue on a sample, because they don't want, they don't, they're not there to supply the public with alcohol. They just want to sell a bottle of rum to whoever wants to purchase it. So the tastings are minimal. And the reason that they do allow for beer and alcohol at farmer's markets is because they are really trying to promote manufacture in Maryland, and farmer's market is the best place to be able to do that. A lot of the times, farmers markets are a launching point for home distillers and home brewers. So it's to basically help Maryland businesses, so that's why they allow. And I, from my position, that I go by what the state of Maryland says. And the Maryland, the state of Maryland says it is a good idea to be able to promote local beer and wine and meat and all of that at the farmer's market, offering a little sip. It's not my decision to change what the state's already determined.
I'm of the opinion that the issue related to the farmer's market had been settled. We're going to handle his requests just as we have handled other requests, and that's by staff. Because to treat him any other way than the previous vendors have been treated, I think would not be fair.
Agreed.
As it relates to your other requests related to the events, those are chamber events. And I think your request here is really immature. Your request needs to be made to the chamber. So I think if it would be inappropriate for this body to take any action on this request considering a chamber event.
I think the only thing I would add to that, Vice President Morell, is that, I may not agree with the word immature, but I would say that I think that Burle Oke has other entities in the town that are town craft distillers or meat operators should work with the chamber to find some amicable resolution to this. I think we all want to see Berlin businesses feature that are as much as possible. I think, and this is just me speaking as the mayor, that Burle Oke can work with the chamber, and the chamber can work with Burle Oke the same way that they do other entities that are Berlin businesses to share that market.
I say it can be mature because we may decide to go in another way later on, but as we structure these events down, the authority lies with the chamber. I would refer to say you need assistance in operating the deal, mediating the deal, exacting our...
I did that once, and I thought we figured it out. I think that, I agree. And I think that if you two can't work it out, it's going, and I say Burle Oke and the chamber, if you guys can't work that out, and this continues to be a year-over-year challenge, we may have to explore the structure of future events. But I think that you all can be adults and work through this. And if you need some help, the local mayor's office may need to work through that, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So this is my thought on this situation. I don't see why we should... I apologize for coming here on your company behalf and thinking about my employees. I truly do. At the end of the day, as a business owner, that's what we do, right? We think about our staff and the people that we employ. But at the same time, the grand theme here is, as everybody stated, these events are not our event. Well, they're town events. But we, these are chamber events. Those are people who should honestly, this conversation should be had with. I understand at one point it was just a burly, and then it became a business, and then it became a business, and we're growing. And we all, listen, I love every single restaurant in this town, and I like to, when I choose to, if I choose to, partake in whatever business establishment is here in this town. But I feel that bypassing the people in charge of the event is not necessarily a good look for an entity. It doesn't show that you're supporting the town. And I'm not saying you personally, but I'm saying for anyone who wants to go that route. And if we were to allow, if we were to have said yes, which I don't think we're going to say yes, to allowing this, then we would have to do that for every single everybody else that came, be it Berlin Brewing. Ego wants, Mr. Ego says, hey, I want to own the party too. I want my own booth and sell as much redheaded stepchild as I choose, not just what I give, not just what I brokered to the chamber. And I don't think, personally, I don't think that's right. Because a minute ago, our concern was overall consumption, and the chamber says that within being the part of the responsible entity, they're, they are put in a cap or at least having some control over how consumption is being handled overall. And allowing entities to spend it by themselves, by themselves, that completely knocks out that control. And for us to think and hope and pray that each entity is going to take into consideration the time of Berlin, not saying Berlin itself, but periods, that's being very naive on our part, because at the end of the day, everybody wants to make profits. And you hope and pray that that person who you just going to did not have more than they should have had. But with them being in charge, I feel a bit better allowing consumption, period, rather than having separate entities come in and get the license to show up at their events to sell to their patrons, like, you see where I'm going? If, at the end of the day, I might be mad because I can't get as many big naps as I want when I should be cut off. And that's just me putting that, I'm not, I'm not even trying to be low to release that. But I may be upset, but if you're cutting me off at two because you know I don't need anymore, I feel better to cut off, having somebody there to overall police all of this, for lack of a better term, than having everybody servicing just because service into their customers' content. So I can go to this.
Can I ask the body to table in motion twenty-four dash twelve? And we can revisit at a later date if necessary. What will, my request would be to table, and then what we'll do is the mayor's office will follow up with this.
Burle Oke.
And the chamber to see if they feel it's necessary for us to have a meeting with staff and us.
Together.
If not...
I guess I could throw out an amendment to twenty-four dash twelve that the farmer's market discussion would be handled with staff, with delegation and discussion of the word consumption and sampling. And that's the motion I have for twenty-four dash twelve, and the rest of it, I guess, I guess my motion is for twenty-four dash twelve to have a Berlin farmer's market discussion with Burle Oke, return to staff, though, for further discretion and explanation of consumption and sampling, and table the request for action on the events listed in the motion.
Would you consider changing the word consumption to the word sampling since it's already defined by the state?
Sure.
I think that would be...
The motion is really, state law, I mean, would you have to settle that?
And there's a process in place for the farmer's market. But if you make it accurate, you can make the motion...
I think the wording is...
Are you looking for a...
It can be this, that makes it sound to the consumption.
Stand there and...
A sample is a sample.
Okay, so do you want, do you feel comfortable returning the farmer's market, as we discussed, to staff to handle, they handle that all, so it doesn't really matter what the...
That's true.
Set.
Yeah.
And then table in motion twenty-four, sort of that, that's around that.
Right, that's a part of that.
I mean, generally, if you table it...
It's with the intent of bringing it back, I guess.
Well, only if it's defined, but you're, you can table it and let it run.
If we are, and I don't want to stay on this all night, because I don't think so.
We do.
But what I'm saying is, if we're going to table this, knowing that most of us at this table, at this entity right here, many of us feel that we don't agree with this what they ask, why would we do that?
It's really, it's really a formality. If you look at Rockwood Rules, if you, if you table something without a date of revisiting, it's really just going to sit there until somebody else asks for it if you revisit. However you want to do it, I'm okay with, but...
It fails.
Okay.
Or you can do that some other way.
That's true.
Okay. If it's denied, you know the people on that.
Well, I think there's, there's not going to be any action on it.
I think that technically you can request a motion, and if no one makes that motion, it's obvious.
Okay. Well, seeing no motion, thank you and have a great day. We'll follow up regarding the other matter. Up next is agenda I three A, a presentation by Beacon regarding our strategic plan and summary of the current progress. We have Beacon's director, John Nickman, and associate director, who doesn't have any... Yep. Good evening. Thank you both for being with us, and sorry for the delay.
So I'm going to turn you through some of these slides, apparently, clearly, during our talk, because I did spend, I will, but I'm haggling out of our time here. So I really want to get into just the main areas that are making feedback, but as we're going through, if you'd like to stop, make some questions or clarifications, I'll slow down. So the first slide, this is really summary of what we talked about in our last meeting. I just want to give you a full picture of where we are, I think, setting up this, starting the conversation as a strategy here. After that meeting, starting in December, we worked to put together, that's what you had a question about the prior strategic plan. So we put a summary of that together, working with the town administrator and feedback from people, so to give a summary of where that was. I think there was, giving that summary to the committee, gave them a whole fuller background of where those projects were. We held two listening sessions, good participation in each of those, really good participation in the evening session, and got a lot of information we were able to share with the committee. We have a strategic planning session with the strategic planning team on January twenty-fifth here. And at that, we've given a summary of all the comments there. You have a summary of that in the report here. And our next phase is to plan for, with your encouragement, to get to through phase three. So just to give a quick overview of the listening session, at the session at the library on, we had eighteen community members present. We might have more in the Sunday that were sent, who weren't able to attend. The key points are on there. At one of the sessions at St. Paul, we had forty-five people, which was a tremendous turnout, and a really vigorous discussion, also, I think, I think all of the council members were there. We may have, I think the council will be, you are able to be there, but understand how pleased. We'll get good feedback. You all got that direct feedback also at that. So from that, some of the common themes that very positive, Berlin's a great place to live, people want to keep that, the aspects that they think are great. Transportation particularly connected all parts of Berlin, was important crosswalks, access across major roadways, and activities to keep young people involved. Those were some common themes. The differing themes came up very clearly, some concerns about the two sides of Berlin. And I think that we had discussions at our last committee meeting that really talked about this. Also, looking at, you know, the economic growth in different parts of Berlin, and making sure that that is shared across, and whatever can be done to, again, maintain that economic growth throughout the town. Some concern about being priced out of markets, so I'm not putting forward an answer, but that that is a concern, and the committee discussed that. And gentrification taxes came up, a few of these areas that were concerned.
John, I will pause you right there. I know we've talked about it a little bit, or mentioned it to some of my colleagues. When we had, I think Jonathan's name was Daru here from, as part of the conference of plan discussion, he had mentioned that the city of Atlanta, and one thing that I think's worth noting as far as affordability is, the city of Atlanta has a nonprofit arm that works with private businesses and donors to basically help folks that as their property values increase and their tax liability increases, but their income may not increase at the same level, if they meet certain parameters, they have to help assist with that additional tax burden. So I think it's worth this body, considering as we move forward, how we can help with that affordability side, because we understand that the cost of each one of these apartments' operations and the demands that our citizens would like to seek increase with time. And that does cost a little bit more with taxes, but there might be ways that we can help those that are on fixed incomes or have other parameters. So, just from the affordability standpoint, since I know that comes to the court of it.
And so that's a good point about my justice here, just talking and taking events at the same time, sometimes I can't read my hand or anything. But taking that back to the lighting committee, that's possibly an action item. So when we give the action items, I am going to ask for some feedback on, I've asked NSK, because it's only a feedback matter, but looking at what the strategic goals are, any action items that might fit in to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At our strategic planning session, just really quickly, we did another review of the process. I'm going to go through some of the tables that we covered there, make sure there's agreement on them. Particularly looking at mission, vision, values, and really spent a lot of time, more time than we initially thought on this, but it was good, it was time well spent, to come to some consensus on the question. And then we broke out into groups, heard also about clearance, change in, potential to change in structure, is to have those sessions, to have two meetings instead of one, and that they be for a short period of time, because people, by the end, were...
Our brains were lost.
So good feedback there. So as I go through these items, particularly, any feedback that you have in your wording, let us know, we'll take that back to the committee to break that. So the revised mission statement for the town of Berlin, the heart of the town of Berlin lies in our dedication to nurturing community pride, preserving heritage, and creating a clean, safe, enjoyable, enjoyable and affordable environment for residents, workers, and visitors. That was the provision, revised mission. Up for the vision, the ambition of a town where our heritage, culture, resilience, friendliness, and well-being serve as guiding... serve as guiding principles, fostering a vibrant and inclusive community. And then, community values, uh, uh, structurally, we, we went back and forth on the order of these, uh, but, uh, community value, heritage, pride, the legacy of the past, extending the seed to the future. Culture, arts and entertainment, set creating a vibrant cultural scene for residents and visitors to enjoy. Resilience, uh, being financially stable, ensuring responsible stewardship for a stable and secure financial foundation. Inclusivity, welcoming and respectful, embracing diversity, employing a friendly and respectful community for all. Well-being, committed to wellness, prioritizing health and well-being of our community. Finally, vibrancy, embracing growth and future-oriented, fostering growth, innovation, and preparation for the town's future. So I'll just stop for a minute, and if there's any feedback quickly, um, that you have, what? Time for a special, I just wanted to, just.
If you mind going back a slide?
Yes.
So the, I think it's probably, uh, the vision, uh, do, do we need, we envision?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, towns where our heritage, culture, we go on there. Maybe I'm going to, maybe I'm too, too, my details.
Yeah.
We can scroll down a little bit like that.
Thanks, guys.
I'm with you on that.
Well, I, I had asked Sarah to, or did you have anything? I had asked Sarah to bring my brick because I wanted to, uh, do you recall your feedback during our discussion? I meant, wanted to make sure it was on the record.
Go ahead. Thank you. I had a discussion with the mayor, and, and, and I'm really, really surprised that, 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 that multifamily dwellers in my neighborhood did not come up any discussion because, uh, where I live, that has been designated as a multifamily dwelling area. But, but at the same time, that has been, I feel, developed enough. And if we're going to look to multifamily dwellers, we, we need to look somewhere other than my neighborhood. We also talked about, uh, when it comes to affordability. Through the, uh, through, through the presentation, I noticed affordability related to rent. And, and yes, I think that is, that is an, an important as- aspect. But we also need to look at affordability related to single-family dwellers. We, we talked about, uh, uh, we talked about. We talked about, if we made it last.
I have those second word comments.
That guy, no.
That is from our.
We talked about, uh, the tax base. And being taxed, and being able to live here in the town of Berlin. Well, 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 you don't need to be a rocket scientist to know that, that the services provided by the town is, is going to have an increase, an increase in price tag. So, so what we have to do to, to allow folks to maintain, to be able to live here and not be taxed out of their home, is to grow the tax base. Now, now you grow the tax base by, by what I have always referred to as environmentally planned, environmentally set and planned growth. Uh, uh, we, we do not want to be a town that is, that is sprawled throughout this, this, this area. The mayor talked about, w- one of his issues is, is infill, that, that is filling the, the vacant lots that, that are currently in the town of Berlin. But we're going to have to grow outside of our established boundaries to, to sustain our way and quality of life. And you do that by, uh, by, uh, I think, single-family dwellers and, and bringing in business, uh, through the, that, our town, with, with limits. We also talked about the, uh, the, uh, we also talked about tax inequity. Yes. And this is just these people, right? But, but, uh, but I don't think we can have, you know, we can have different tax rates for, for the individuals that live here in the town of Berlin. Personally, I may not feel that, that, that my tax dollars are going in the right place, but, but I think it would be unfair to have different tax rates based on neighborhood, based on community. And this is just my opinion. I want to be treated just like everybody else in the town of Berlin, so, so, so I think that needs to be, be across the board. You, I, 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 I seen in part of the presentation that talked about, uh, YMCA. Well, I've been on this, this council long enough to, to, to know that, that, that partnership with the YMCA has been explored and, 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 uh, and with the controls that are mandated by that organization, we have decided that, that, that it would be in our interest to, to, to investigate and move toward, uh, uh, a community center that, that is, that is actually, uh, I'm going to say managed, owned, and operated by the citizens of the town of Berlin. We want to do our own thing. And, uh, and, and we have made efforts toward that endeavor, uh, there was a plan to, to actually build, uh, a community center that is going to, that is going to impact our, and be used by our, our community over on, uh, Flat Street, where, where the current multifamily purpose building stands. But, but in going through, in going through your, uh, presentation, I'd rather want to get into the action steps. So, so if we could get through the action steps, uh, I, I think that's a good place to be.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So just before we move on, uh, any feedback on these, uh, that, I believe, uh.
From the committee's perspective, I just want to add that we did have, uh, council, council member Eric, councilor Orson, myself, uh, served on the strategic planning, uh, committee that's got community partners on there as well. I want to say you all have done a phenomenal job of taking the feedback of that group and the listening sessions and taking your first draft to the current draft, so thank you for that.
Well, and, and really that, that goes back to the committee, uh, and I will say we.
And we're.
We're facilitating that. I will say, very good discussion. Took longer than we wanted to to get to, to the mission, vision, and values, but that, that was the stepping stone that started driving these driving strategies. So, uh, I'll just go through, here is the driving strategies, and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll put these up here quickly. Uh, the action steps will fill in under these driving strategies. So, uh, uh, just quickly, improving and expanding infrastructure, focusing on reliability and safety, focusing on public safety needs, commands, and expectations, addressing interconnectivity of neighborhoods and access to businesses and services, including parking, uh, retaining small-town feel, enhancing equity, and providing opportunities for all income levels to live and thrive in Berlin. Improving recreation facilities, public amenities, green spaces, including existing facilities and access for all, and a longer-term strategy to unify the town. So, the, uh, the group that was working, we're working groups to, to come up with action items on this. This is our work product for the next time, so that's where getting some feedback on this. For improved and expanded infrastructure, um, the, I'm not going to worry a lot about the, uh, who, when, resources and methods as much as getting the, the, uh, so increase number of businesses and homes with fiber optic connectivity, improve work, uh, more resources and more quality and sewer, um, we had a work piece working on that. Uh, stormwater runoff improvements, it's setting, improve roads and sidewalks, tunnels specifically, community improvement and education on stormwater runoff. So these were the, uh, the action steps under, uh, for an expanded structure, uh, focusing on reliability and safety. This one, uh, the committee made on progress, so I don't know if there's any edits that you may want in here, things that you may want to incorporate.
Is it possible to see, uh, this? And I know that it's in the documents that we have in front of us, but is it possible we get like this for each one? Even if it's blank, for each one of the?
Yep.
And then, um, if we could just, is there one there in our packet for each one of them? I don't think there is. I think it's just a, a blank one.
Oh, that, you're right.
So maybe if we can have our group also before our next meeting, that if we want anybody that's not only committee, if you want to draw your nose onto that and give that to Sarah, we'll make sure that gets the beacon in advance for me.
So, uh, in here.
Uh, I'd have to ask Sarah.
Started, we just getting started. We only have met one time. Because of this meeting, we were supposed to meet tonight. But tonight was the town meeting and us, we saw on the agenda, this, this is very important to the community. You know, in time cast, how many of us have you seen sitting out here?
And I am still glad to see you.
Okay sweetheart.
That's exciting.
Okay.
It warms both, not just my heart, but everybody's.
And you, and. And you will see, and you will see more of us if we begin to unify ourselves. Because we're divided. Okay, I'm saying it as. I'm, I'm saying it the best I can. Do you feel me? I hope so.
I'm trying to, I really.
Well, if you.
The divide, I'm not, I'm not hearing the divide, I'm not seeing the divide between District Three and.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you would just let us know, uh, uh, when you plan to meet, we will be present.
Yeah, hey, Dean, that's all I need to hear. And we can, like I said, we can discuss, this is the first time. And you weren't there when we had the, the, over in Flowershe, you weren't there. You didn't hear, some of your council friends heard it. And they understand it probably. So we just need to get started. Action. That's what you were saying tonight, you know, but we, but we just can't. We just can't do nothing. That's not an option. Am I right or wrong as a community?
As a community too, we just can't do nothing.
Amen.
And again, uh, you let us know, uh, when you plan to meet and.
And, and it don't have to be all the time.
And we will be present.
Yeah, it won't have to be all, but we just need to get our heads together so we can be, because tonight when you shared some things, you know, he tried to trouble me because it, 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 it's, we gotta look at the whole picture. And like you said, that was your opinion and we all have an opinion and that's, and I have an opinion and I said, you know, it can't go on my opinion. This is community. We all have a part in it. And we all need to input, the ones that want to input in it. And then I think we'll have a better whole. A much better when at the end, we can live more in harmony with each other. Thanks.
That's good. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah.
Dave, if you don't mind, I just wanna apologize because I, it was not an intentional, no public comment, of course. It was not in the items for approval because it was a presentation, but I did wanna say, one, that I apologize if it felt that way.
Well.
Two, and two, if you don't mind, that I really appreciate you being here. You've attended quite a few meetings recently and it really doesn't mean a lot. So thank you.
Okay.
Um, up next, anyone else from the public that would like to address the mayor and council regarding item three A, which is the strategic plan that we just discussed. Uh, thank you. Uh, up next is agenda item three B, uh, Town Berlin Financial Overview, uh, FY twenty. Thank you, uh, John and Jeff. Up next is agenda item three B, Town Berlin Financial Overview, FY twenty-four six hundred. What's that?
Are we sure we're gonna do that?
Uh.
Are you ready about the numbers?
Well, it's up to you. Do you feel it could be better?
It's up to you if you want to transfer it next.
Do you want to do it?
I, I feel like your voice is wrong.
I think it's probably better. If you, if you're okay with it, let's do it.
I'll go with that. I want your questions out.
Let's take that with a fresh mind. Agenda item three C, Tim, do you wanna address us regarding PJM? What am I?
Alright, uh, I'd like to report on the PJM, uh, quarterly report. Uh, this report is from October to December of twenty twenty-three. Uh, energy sold with United Million was five hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred eighty-eight KWH. The amp build was four hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred thirty-three. PJM charges were two hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred seventy-three. PJM AMR credit, that's a credit back, is fifty-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-eight. Uh, fuel, lead, and other costs for the power plant is three thousand and fifty dollars. Uh, total power cost for six hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-eight and cost per KWH sold was zero point zero six eight, six five. Just compared to last quarterly reports last year, September, uh, cost per KWH, uh, was zero point zero eight three, five-two. So there was a decrease within this quarter. Also, I'd like to report on the amp, uh, twenty twenty-three vote sell power cost for the town of Berlin. Power rates for Berlin at the end of the year is fifty-nine thousand, fifty-six dollars a megawatt hour. Just to let you know, when I came here in two thousand ten, when I first started, it was about sixty-eight dollars a megawatt hour. So that's changed in the past thirteen years, which is really good. Um.
I think that's a lot to your leadership and the staff that we have working, uh, both internally and externally with our consultants.
Definitely is, as mayor, council, uh, our consulting firm and, uh, other entities that have worked, uh, to give our rates lower. Um, so anyway, the, um, for the year, Berlin used forty-six, uh, thousand, six hundred eighty-five megawatt hours of energy. This is a five point nine percent decrease from twenty twenty-two and four point six percent lower than twenty twenty-three. Four times. Uh, congestion, the cost of transporting power to Berlin from DPL, uh, zone, was higher than expected, which increased rates by approximately two dollars a megawatt hour. Uh, DPL transmission rates came in higher than expected, adding an additional three point seven five megawatt hour into the rate. DPL's transmission rates are about a year, their new rate was higher than they expected in our budget. Then you have the chart below that shows the monthly energy usage comparative forecast, uh, containing the twenty twenty-three heat data. I'd like to also add that our rates are still lower than shop tank and the local power load, so if you wanna carry that.
Thank you, Tim, for that report. Any questions for Tim?
Thank you.
Alright, just, I think that monthly charge can't be stated enough, um, just because I know that continues to be a, I believe a misconception of, uh, misconception. You said, if you could repeat that again, where time is it? The, the monthly charge now compared to what it was thirteen years ago?
When I first came here in two thousand ten, our megawatt hour charge was around, I think it was sixty-six to sixty-eight dollars an hour. That's just for the megawatt charge and now we're down to the fifties, fifty-nine, uh, fifty-six.
Great. I think that's fantastic. And another, on the town website, we have some information on that. I guess this will be, um, probably updated now or soon.
And, uh, plus, we have not raised our rates since I've been here, since two thousand ten, so that's been going on fourteen years now.
Yeah.
Actually lower than two thousand twelve.
It's good stuff. I think it's definitely more high than, um, I think a lot of people confuse the utility bills with purely electric. There's a lot of other things on the bills, you know. So I think it's all, like, all the energy bills are so high, well, actually, it's a piece of it, you know. Um, there's the utilities as well, but, uh, a lot of numbers and sometimes you, um, we kind of gloss over it and it's getting late in the night, but I think that was, uh, just wanted to highlight that.
Just, we're just, uh, small piece of information too, related to the most current bill. Yeah. Because of the holidays, it covered a longer period of time, which also impacted. That's something, yeah, that's something that we keep hearing, uh, the, the ladies out front telling people that they have to make note of how many days that bill actually covers.
And that happens a couple times a year. It also happens like way after Christmas. Yeah, it happens now because everybody always.
Yeah, usually the bills are like thirty-one, thirty-two days. This one was thirty-nine. And it does make an impact.
Thirty-nine, yes.
I think it's common though. Yes, statement. We have actually, uh, scheduled out the meter reading scheduled for the entire year. And now we're keeping it right to about thirty days a month, uh, so it should not have that, should not have that thirty-five, thirty-eight.
And then when we get to the AMI bill, certainly that's gonna move that one.
So, so Mary, usually the deal is based on around thirty days.
Right.
But this most current deal was, was up to thirty-nine.
Yeah, it's, it's significant.
The first place.
They're all in the, uh, year, but. It gets a little harder.
Now that was a sick.
Anything, anything else regarding this report? Thank you, Tim, we appreciate it. Uh, like Natalie's report, we're gonna move deep, plus I want some part of my own feedback on that still, so. We're gonna move deep to our next meeting as well, which is the Town Berlin Annual Reporting Goals. And we're gonna go to item number four, which is discussion step and grade system for FY twenty-five with coal and projections. Our given resource is Director Kelsey Jensen.
Okay, so, um, last council meeting, you guys, um, had indicated that you wanted, um, figures that included the stepping grade, um, a two percent cola, a three percent cola, and a four percent cola, and then you wanted me to estimate out what that may look like. Um, so going off the staff report first, um, I know Kate did add in another sheet that looks like this. Uh, this other sheet is gonna be discussed in a second, but come with the first sheets first. Everyone looks very confused. Make sure we're looking at the same.
Page eighty-two.
Eighty-two and eighty-three of the packet. The page kind of in the middle, um, is, wasn't added for longevity by last minute. Um, so you guys had indicated some interest in seeing two percent, three percent, four percent cola, so I, I projected that out, um, and put it in this spreadsheet. Um, stepping grade with a two percent cola, um, would come out to three hundred sixteen thousand and that would include what we adjusted plus a two percent if you were to go that route. Um, three hundred and seventy-two thousand would be the stepping grade with a three percent cola. Um, and then four hundred and twenty-eight thousand would be the stepping grade with a four percent cola. So, um, and then I could try to project that out, um, for FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, so that.
Sorry, um, you said these numbers, they already included the two hundred eleven thousand you brought last week?
Yes, yep. Um, so that is, um, yeah, and when I'm sitting, when, in this table I've done, um, obviously, there's a lot of work behind the scenes, these are just pulling from that, but, um, that difference, uh, different current in SOG with two percent, sorry, it's a lot to fit in that spot, um, that those figures, yeah, would be from the current budget and it would include that second grade, so that's where that difference is there, so, um. So, yeah, it, all I'm really looking for from you guys, um, it would not, um, tie you to anything, it wouldn't be any, um, you know, obligation for you to continue with that, but I do need a figure to give to Natalie to, uh, include in the FY twenty-five budget figures that are gonna come before you guys. I don't know if you want that to be just the stepping grade.
I think what we'll do for the budget is just step, unless this body wants to go a different direction, it's just the stepping grade. I wanted to make sure of you that everybody had the figures going into the work section. But I think that the budget should reflect the stepping grade and then the two, three, or four is something that I think we're gonna have to work through with the general fund by the work section. How does the group feel on that? Or do you feel like putting one of these numbers in?
That's longevity. You guys also indicated you wanted to know longevity and I'll kind of run through it. I don't, I can do it now if you want, before you say anything about what to include, um, but, so this, as I mentioned, when the packet went out, I didn't quite have this ready, I was still kind of working through it. I try to make it as clear as I can, but it is hard to illustrate in writing what, um, my thought process was here, but, um, so I only looked at people with ten plus years of service, um, and then I looked at people with twenty plus years of service. So I broke it out if you were to go with anyone with ten plus, or if you were to only look at people with twenty plus. So option A is gonna be a set amount of money per year, uh, per service. Um, so if someone had ten years of service in that, uh, option A, that first column is giving a hundred dollars per year added to their salary for, um, each year of service. So, um, and that is ten plus years of service would be good about eighty thousand dollars. Um, if you were to do only people with twenty plus years of service doing a hundred dollars per year, getting added into their, um, annual compensation, came out to forty-nine thousand and some change. And then, um, I also did the exact same thing, but with fifty dollars per year instead. I was trying to make this a, not trying to price this out here, so I just wanted to give you a few options. So, uh, the only downfall with, uh, with A is the most fair option. It compensates everyone, uh, based on their tenure and their years of service, but it does not, it kind of takes us out of the stepping grade on those people because it's not gonna fall in step. Um, so that is, that's something to consider, but it is the most fair way to, um, compensate for this year's service. Option B was giving, using those figures from A, but going, um, to a step that was near that amount of money. Um, I know that, like I said, it's confusing to say, but I was trying to work a couple options. So that was going to the step that was closest to that dollar now. Um, and then the other half of option B was doing the exact same thing, but no one got over a five thousand dollar increase. Um, because, um, some of those steps for some individuals, um, you know, and they'll be, depending on where you are on that grade scale, if you're a higher grade, your steps cost more money than someone at a lower grade. You might be getting the same amount of steps, but the dollar figure's gonna be different. Um, and then option three again, uh, or C, I'm sorry, is one step per ten years of service. Um, and I, I can, I did it for people with ten plus years of service and twenty plus years of service. And then the second portion of that was no one getting over five hundred thousand. So, um, the, the whole purpose of doing this. Alright, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry to move on, I did. So the whole purpose of doing this, and I kind of tried to give a quick explanation, so employee one and employee two are both doing the exact same job. Employee one has been here twenty years, employee two's only been here five. Neither of them were at thirty-five percent of the market with what they were being paid. They were both underpaid if you're looking at the market. So last July, you all brought them to thirty-five percent. And now those two people with that same amount are doing the same job, but one has fifteen more years of service, is now making the same amount as that person because neither of them are being compensated, uh, at that market rate. So, and even if someone was slightly above that market rate, but you brought this person up, you now close that gap significantly. So that was one thing we talked about last year when we were working through those steps, was that if you didn't do anything for ten year, you were gonna be closing that gap and, I mean, we do have some employees doing the exact same position. You know, some here thirty plus years and some here, you know, five years, and they're, they're pretty close or making the same certain situation. So that's why we wanna acknowledge ten year, um, I think it's important to do something, um, but I'm kind of looking to you guys to, I mean, I don't hold a purse, so, you know, I'm looking at you guys to kind of tell me what, what you want me to look at if anything. So presenting a few options and, um, I, as I said in here, some other considerations. You know, we could set different amounts if you wanted to go with, uh, any of these, we could set kind of different parameters, because like I said, on, and two different dollar amounts per year service on video that, um, basing off of about a hundred dollars a year, what that step would be. So, I mean, I can look at different figures, um, but every, you know, it's not, it's not just a click of a button either. It does take a significant amount of time on some of these to work all these numbers, but, um.
We don't need to know this tonight.
No, just, just giving it to you to consider. Um, and another option, like I said on here, is, um, you know, you could, you could implement this January one if you wanted to lessen the fiscal impact, um, you know, but at least acknowledging to employees that you're gonna do something this fiscal year. Um, and then I, I put it here because I'm presenting all options. It's not a favorable one, but you could do like a one-time payment to people, but I wouldn't recommend that because then you're still leaving that gap closed, you're just compensating them like a one-time, one-off thing there, so.
Let's see, why, um, I don't want to finish that, but just a question, maybe you could do that. An option, why is someone who has worked twenty plus years at a hundred dollars per year less than someone who's worked?
Well, it's the same group of people, I'm just including everyone with ten plus years of service, and then in the other, I'm only looking at people with twenty plus years of service. So it's, the twenty plus should all be, um, less money because there's less people that have twenty plus years of service. So, um, and, and I'm happy to answer any questions, even if you wanna take it home and look at it and give me a call. I'll be here, so.
But I think you made a good direction.
I do.
Well, I mean, at this point, what's gonna happen is it's, unless you all stay out of this, it will be the stepping grade totals that we discussed in the draft budget and then figure out where we are from there. But, I mean, that's, I'll bet this group, if they want to deviate from that.
I think I don't want to deviate from it, let's see what everybody else says. Um, and the reason is because I, it's not, I'm gonna give you some slight reviews when it may go to be my second budget, but I do find that once things get in the budget, it's just getting a little tough to maneuver them around. Um, and I just would like, because the number that I'm sure we all wanna know is, um, new revenue, you know, what that's gonna be, what it's not gonna be. Um, and I would personally, I guess I would prefer a little placeholder with a coal, because I feel like coal is important to me. Um, and you know, what that number is, I mean, three percent would be down the middle, um, uh, those are large numbers.
And be cognizant that nobody at this point, and not even finance department, has a solid workup of where revenues and expenditures lie. So we don't, we don't have that anywhere under mattress or in a.
Oh, no, it wasn't.
And it won't hold us to anything. You could put the two or three percent or whatever you have in mind and if we can't, it's not like you're obligated to say to that.
No, but we do need to, we, we do need to be cognizant of that when we mock up the budget, it's with trying to get the information here and the tax rate aligned. So that's, I, I'm willing to hear all options, I'm just saying you gotta understand, without us knowing where our revenues are and our expenses are, it's difficult to say what the sweet spot will be.
I do understand that for sure.
Well, what I was just gonna ask, a simple thing here is to consider going with the decision in general. What are we trying to do? Are we trying to go with a stepping grade and then redo the budget at end? Or your decision will be to look at stepping grade, last of all, and plus consider longevity? If this is the idea, then we should go with that idea and project the budget and then scale that back and then scale up.
Those are kind of where I was getting.
Oh, me too.
So, um.
Then provide, provide, go ahead, Steve, with, uh, your thoughts.
Well, um, longevity is, um, makes me sweat. Uh, for tonight, I think, I think it's just, um, this is a lot of things we've been working on this. I just think it does take, um, there's a lot of layers to that on the end of the night. Um, and I hear Natalie saying it would be nice to have an ideal, and I don't care if you do it. I would think, I would say, um, stepping grade and three percent as the, put into the budget, knowing what you just said, that it's, um, easier to go down. That means that I think.
For who?
Um, yeah.
For who?
It's easier to go down than up, but I also wanna kind of hear, and I, I think all the employees hope and that we would consider, first of all, as Kelsey brought it up, to think about that thirty-five percent, yeah, that no one was, not everybody was touched whilst here. So if we're doing something, it has to be addressed and we need to have a feel where we stand with each department on the budget. We need to have a direction, whether we go in and if we're not touching the longevity at all, that will potentially create, um.
How many, how many, um, employees were not affected by the thirty-five percent?
I can get that to you, or if you don't have it with me, I don't, um, I don't recall. I have much stuff with me, but I don't think I have that one.
But I can tell you right now, it's, for example, Department of Finance, Department of Service was not affected, that is six employees, so.
So, so what you're, my, my understanding is, what you're saying is, let's, let's just go, let's just, from numbers three percent and the three hundred seventy-two thousand, you're saying we still are gonna add to it possibly for those who were not affected.
That's a decision we asked you to consider, yes.
So we know how much that will be here tomorrow.
To clarify though, every employee was brought to at least thirty-five percent. Some were closer to thirty-five percent at the start of the process than others. So, so while, while what Natalie's saying is not incorrect, that there were some who would not touch the extent of others, everyone was brought to that thirty-five percent market.
And let's just, let's also be clear on the fact that the plan with, that we all have agreed upon is totals with the, uh, stepping grade implementation, and that takes everybody to the closest step, plus one, which each one is what.
It's two and a half.
Two and a half percent. So I just wanna be clear with the group that we have gone to the nearest step with the plan and we have gone plus two point five percent.
Right, but understand that you are being more dispo, disproportionate. When you do that, because you have, we'll use J, for the two-point line. Go to the next step, John gets three point four and Jeff gets four point eight. You already had the thirty-five percent where you had one person with fifteen years of position already at the thirty-five percent. The new person went to the exact same place without two years of experience. So when you go ahead with that push to the next step, instead of giving a fixed percent, somebody's gonna get really happy and they're gonna end up with, again, five to six percent, just get them up to the next step, or someone else will be at two point five.
And, and I'm not disapproving that, what we're saying is that we're.
Anything equal in any of these.
I understand, Steve, it's been late, but the thing is, is that we're not saying that we're not gonna touch longevity. We're just saying that we have the information, we are going to explore that, we understand that so far we have not done anything that takes into account that longevity factor.
We're saying that you go the route you go, when you come back with longevity, it's still gonna be a longer gap. When you push to the next one, you pass someone forty-three year experience, go ahead for forty-three years, even if you're going a hundred dollars per year and you go with the pushing up, they can still come up with only eight hundred dollars increase instead of if you really did a dollar a year, it would be four three hundreds.
You were talking about option A. If you had option A, you would be, it would be the most fair way, is what I was saying, if it does take someone out of their set. That's, that's all I was pointing out, but.
I agree. I think the grades are, are based on, based on your training, your, your.
Knowledge, skills, abilities, education, yeah.
Well, if somebody has been here thirty years, that puts them, and this is the, this is the start of our stepping grade system. And we're trying to fit everyone in their place. So if someone's a five and they've been here thirty years, that thirty years has afforded them with, 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 with training and expertise, which is gonna, I, in my opinion, gonna move them to a different grade. So I think those folks need to be plugged into the system where they are at a higher grade. This means they are being compensated for their time and they're starting a, a, at a spot that's gonna afford them the opportunity to move forward at a higher grade. And with, 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 when I had to do this, when I had to do this and, and put everyone, I tried to put everyone where they were on the chart. Those folks that have been here thirty years that are, that are beyond the chart, they may have went to another grade or, um, or two to plug their regular, and, and then they started earning at, uh, at a higher rate per year. But, but it's something to be, um, it's very challenging trying to be fair to, to everyone. But I, I bring this group to, to what we said to our staff last year and what we have said again this year. When the budget systems, when the budget development starts, we're not gonna have staff at the end of this process. We're gonna, we, we're gonna consider our staff first.
Yes.
And I think considering our staff first. And I think considering our staff first means that we put a number in, just like Steve is suggesting to, a number that is, that may be fluid, but, but, but we have an idea, and staff has an idea. No, no, staff knows they are being considered first. And I think we need to hold to that statement we, we said to our folks. Just like Steve, I would recommend that they place holder at three percent COLA.
So I agree with you Vice President Burrell, and I think this council and our staff have done a fabulous job of putting staff first, which is why we implemented the stepping grade, which is why we've said, this is first, this is our first item. The one area where I differ with all of you is that I don't want to take it away. When you say the stepping grade plus three percent, I think that it's wrong to then say, hey, look, we can't afford three, we're gonna do two. So I think whatever you say, which is why my mind goes to stepping grade, and then where can we go from there? Because I don't have a crystal ball into what our revenues are or our expenses. So with that, when the time comes that we then need to move on the tax rate or cut something, I'm going to then ask this body, what, what is that going to be? Right? Because I don't want to take something away that we promised folks in the planning process.
So, so, uh, I would suggest that if it needs to stop, they need to be clouded. Just like always, we have always wanted staff first.
Which we do every year.
Let's go to staff last, after.
No, no, I'm saying staff as in our department directors to help find where we can train. But I don't want to take away from folks if we say three percent, people begin to bank on those things.
Well, that means that we have to work hard to, to try to provide it three percent.
I, I think too, you have all your department heads sitting here, mine is Jamie. I think that if we are all, and Dave, I guess he was here. Um, I think that if we are all very transparent and communicating that with staff too, that that, that may change. This is a placeholder, there's a chance it might go down, you know, but we're at least, we're trying to get you there. And I think that putting a number with the COLA, in my opinion, is the best route to go.
You know you're gonna have seventy-seven people that are really mad if you go down with three percent. You know that.
They are every year, I mean, I'm sorry, but they're mad every year. And I, I do think, like, you know, the Worcester County, for example, they always put in their step and their COLA. I mean, that's what gets presented in front of, goes forward.
But they have an idea of where those numbers are before that is publicly released. They don't have the discussion of our step and our COLA before the budget comes out, right?
This is a.
I know, I know.
Where is the place of prevention? We, we have, we have to put numbers on, on the budget.
I agree, start on that. What I'm saying is that I don't want to take, I want this body to be cognizant of, whatever we put there, I really don't want us to take it away. So whatever you say that number is going to be, I think we need to live up to that. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to take it away either, but I think if it's not in there, it's not gonna happen. And that's just my feeling from, you know, I think that we have.
I also have one another that's just false again, because we have to raise or add COLA later, we have to go to the tax increase, or we have to cut something. We don't want to push this again, that employees become a reason why something cut. Services or taxes went up. So it has to be a direction from you, a decision, whether we go in with the highest option now, and then consider reducing or increasing the revenues. Revenues as it is for general fund, just talking about general fund in general. They're not gonna change a lot for this year, we all know that. There is nothing major coming in to support any of these numbers.
Right.
Even just COLA in place itself.
And last year, we moved a hundred and forty thousand dollars in additional revenue without changing the tax rate. We've spent that already plus some, but by committing to certain things. And we've made other commitments along the way. I've sat in the meetings with fire company, we make commitments. Where is the money coming from, is it, I think I'm asking this group. And when it comes time to set a tax rate, and we only want to move a penny, it ain't gonna happen, is what I'm trying to tell you, in plain language. So whatever we do, I do not want to, if we commit to staff, I do not want to take that away. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Now, when you present the budget, do you present the COLA amount of the several line?
I wouldn't do that. I would, I would keep your salary dollars as salary dollars.
Total salary dollars, and then the total benefit based on the salary dollars.
And it's reflected in each department? I think that if you peel that out, it's an item that is then too easy to roll out, I think.
It's not the difficulty or easiness of rolling out or rolling in, it's the decision which route we need to go. Working the numbers is not what we're concerned here.
But if you need a huge add to your budget.
Absolutely.
John, I'm not even prepared to discuss that option maybe you received tonight, so it's a lot to know, I guess.
But like I just said, to be honest and transparent, as of right now, there is nothing changing with revenues. The tax rate remains as it is right now, there is no additional revenues comment in the general fund. Considering just stepping COLA, we need to consider the revenue comment into COLA that part.
So now, just on that question, so property, correct me, property tax revenue will not see any increase in the second.
It will be, because of the base, of course it will be. So the new properties admitted to the base, but we don't have reassessment for this year, it will be next year. So it is gonna be a bump, of course, for whatever developments coming in. But it's not gonna be a major change unless the, the rate changes.
See, my, last year we had about a hundred and forty-something thousand dollars. Well, that exceeds what we're at already. And what I'm trying to say to the group is, as you're throwing numbers out, be cognizant of where's it gonna come from.
So if you think about that tax rate, that's almost suicide.
I'm just trying to show you all where you're at.
When will we have, I think it's too early, but before, when will we have revenue numbers?
I'll do my best for the next time, but it's so rough. I, I haven't received any reports so far. I only received a report from the county with the assessment rate, that's it. Anything else that normally comes from M L or State Highway, it's not good.
And correct me if I'm wrong now, I mean, it's gonna take a little bit to get to the stepping rate numbers, I think where they need to be, but I think we can do that with our operating revenues. It's gonna come at the expense of some of the money that we can spend on capital projects, but we're spending it on the human capital side of things. And I'm comfortable with that as a group. If anybody's not, let us know, but I think that we're all good with that. Where my discomfort level comes in is committing to something that I don't know where we're at yet.
I understand that too, I just, I won't go any further. I would be, be at least a hold in there. I would be, you know, two percent if that's what we need to, again, knowing that it's a placeholder. But I understand the mayor what you're saying, I definitely do. I just feel like it's helping move that number when it gets into the budget, we see all the numbers, rather know that that line is, but not that it's untouchable, but let's try to approach it as, gotta get there, that's what we're doing for our employees. If, you know, I'm sitting here, if it were two percent, that allows maybe some long, yeah.
That's more conservative.
Yeah. Two percent is more conservative, and I hear the meaning you're saying about the, where it's gonna come from. I just feel like we can get there with our department heads, knowing.
This is where the others go.
Yeah, I'm sure, I was, knew what that was. So, Ian, would you consider two percent?
Yes, yes, I would, but I just want, I just want, want the mayor to listen at statements he has made. He has already, and, and so many words said, when cuts need to be made, we're gonna start with stepping.
I did not say that, and nor do I stand for that.
Well.
I just said, don't take away what you said something.
Well, see, someone said, that's where I heard.
Well, let me correct it, that's not what I said. And what I'm saying is that if something has to be taken away, I do not want whatever number this group says is gonna go into the budget to be the number that's taken away.
I understand what you're saying. But we also need a placeholder.
I agree.
We really need a, a placeholder. And we need to try and build from or to that. And, uh, and I would recommend that we put the stepping grade and COLA with two percent as a placeholder in, in our budget to start.
And with three percent, because the significance could win the two percent and three percent.
Yes, that's fifty thousand dollars.
But three percent means a lot for people, we have not, they have not received COLA last year at all.
Yes, that's what it was, oh, just thinking about longevity too, you know, longevity I'm hearing is very important too, right?
Of course. That could be discussed for another, it, it could be separate discussion.
Who, who else thinks we, we need to have a placeholder?
I think we need a mattress filled with money.
I, I, I think placeholder is a smart place to discuss it. I thought two percent at the beginning, we want to mention three percent. Um, I see the difference, I mean, fifty thousand dollars over the, right? Just under, just over fifty thousand dollars was the difference between the three and the two. Two percent is what, is what, it was my initial thought.
And be cognizant that your jump from stepping grade to two percent, if I'm not misunderstanding this, is a little more than a hundred and ten thousand dollars, is that correct?
Yes, it was, um, sorry, I'm lost, I'm not very scared. Um, with stepping grade, uh, once I ran it with, um, I did take out people that I, like I said, we had retirement, we had a couple other things, so yeah, it came to two of three, um, and then, yeah, so it's about twelve thousand. Twelve thousand, I'm sorry.
A percentage of about fifty, six thousand.
Six AM, my brain's not wanting to read this anymore. Yeah, I think I almost, if you guys wanted to people by a hundred thousand, it'd be a hundred thousand.
Alright, so I've heard from two, will we hear from the others?
I, I agree, I think it's important to show something in the budget, but I think it's gonna be a tough challenge to, based on what you said, to meet this goal. Not that we take it from salaries or employees, but it's gotta come back from somewhere, so. There will be some serious cuts on the other end, because I don't think anyone's certainly to raise taxes to recover that. But I'm comfortable moving forward with the two percent and stepping grade.
Like when we started this discussion with stepping grade a year or two ago, you know, it was a multi-crong, multi-year endeavor, and it was never gonna be easy. And Kelsey, you know, with all these numbers. In, in my other hat, COLAs are, this is what I'm saying, we should go, but COLAs are not guaranteed. COLAs are dependent on the budget of the general setting. The stepping grade is what is secured. I'm gonna go on your recommendation, Kelsey, that staff should be aware, is there gonna listen, they are listening, that we are going to try, it sounds like, for a COLA, plus a stepping grade. I think I would rather aim high and go down, so I would be okay with three percent. And that's why I accept that. But if it was two percent, I would.
Something over there?
I know.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it, hey, forgive me, please. Alright, thank you, so we will mock the budget up with stepping grade plus two percent for the COLA, if you don't mind. Thank you, Kelsey, for your work as well, and I think that in the budget presentation, I would still like to see the number for three and four in our work session as an option. I don't know where we're gonna end up, but if that opportunity exists, I'd still like to see those numbers.
I will, I mean, there, I have a wall in the spreadsheet already, so I will, I mean, they will live there until further notice.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And we'll go with that, you guys.
Yes, we are going, and longevity I think should be in that presentation as well. If you can like synthesize that, or if anybody has feedback on which one they would rather see, maybe we put that in.
And I can, I can break it by phone as well, if that's better, you know, whatever. But I, I do want to say thank you guys, I truly mean that, um, I think a lot of our staff, um, you know, means that too. Even, even that it's something you're considering putting in first, I think it means a lot, so thank you guys.
And please know that my thoughts, I, I know I've gone at it hard, but please know that my takeaway on this is that I'd like to keep it and not take away. And I err usually in my personal and my professional life with a lot of caution. So that's where my apprehension comes, so. But, well, that is, I want this body to know that the last item that I intend to cut is the two percent. That, in what sense we have said it, that is the last thing that I see on top of it. So, alright. Up next is our first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four, Act Zero One, uh, Mayor Council of Berlin for Berlin Infrastructure Bonds twenty twenty-four Series A, that's me reading this, Gaskell, I have to, I don't have to think. I'm not doing that.
Summarize it about three seconds.
Go ahead, how about you summarize formally?
Well, this ordinance will allow the Mayor Council to go through the bond market for infrastructure bonds for potential, for use of, it's a public works building.
Paid M I metering, that's it.
And the public hearing will be held on March the eleventh.
Yes, that's Mary, I did, the A I meters will be for the electric department.
Right.
And the public hearing Monday, March eleventh. Have we set our allocation? Alright, up next is Agenda Item Number Six, more announcements, tax rate, uh, public hearing dates. April eighth, and that will be here in this chamber, uh, seven o'clock, normal meeting time. April eighth, tax rate, public hearing date. The introduction will be early, a week before, or the two weeks before at the council meeting, and it'll also be in the news table for anybody that wants to see, like, the constant.
The eighth is introduction.
Eighth is introduction, the public hearing date is the subsequent eighth, which would be the one, somebody help me? Do you want to know that for sure?
I have.
Thank you.
Twenty-second?
Oh, this is. Four eight. Alright.
Eight is the second and the fourth of April, the second Monday is April eighth, and the fourth Monday is April twenty-second.
So the introduction will occur on the eighth of April, and the adoption will occur on the twenty-second. Thank you. And prior.
The advertisement will be placed by the local, have a week prior.
A week prior to the introduction. Correct, so anybody that wants to see that, look at the local press, as well as the town website, and it'll have the, um, the constant yield rate and all the calculations for anybody that wants to. Thank you. Up next is the announcement regarding a poll vote, uh, results for a portion of the opioid settlement. I swear I had that here. Alright. Yes, it is.
Very good. One opioid.
Thank you. Thank you. Summary of the vote, Burrell was in favor, Green was in favor, Nair was in favor, Nichols. Anyone provide a yes, say yes. That's a reference, like the council member Nichols was also in favor, and council member Horst was in favor. So the national prescription opioid litigation bankruptcy update, so this has to do with the national opioid settlement that we're involved with in this town. Uh, it says, please review, this is the email on David one oh eight, please, we're getting the email below. The law group, uh, which has been retained by the town of Berlin in a matter of national prescription opioid litigation, David Gaskell is recommending authorizing the law group, uh, and the town to proceed with the current plan to elect to accept the outline releases in the subsequent email, which has also provided, uh, Mr. Ball works with the law group that, that we. which has also provided, uh, Mr. Ball works with the law group that, uh, that we contract with, and they need a response by February twenty-second, which creates this meeting, which will light up as a candle. Anything with this? Summarize, thank you all. Up next are the departmental reports. Mary, do you have anything?
I do.
Okay, we do have one item from the water resources department, uh, which is the request for a spray irrigation pump station, uh, and, well, some equipment for the spray irrigation pump stations at A and B. Uh, it's for some SCADA equipment. Uh, each one of you has a copy of the invoice and they're requesting an approval of fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. It would come from all our teams. So a motion by Vice President Burrell, second by council member Nichols, all in favor say aye. All of those, let the record reflect that the requested expenditure is free. Alright, anything else for government departmental, or are we good? Up next is comments from the public. Anyone from the public that would like to address the mayor council? Thank you all for bearing with us this evening. Uh, up next are any comments from the council, we'll start with Vice President Burrell.
Okay. How would we go about the encouraging state to pay Flower Street or do some work on Flower Street? Did paddles and ruts or, uh, pillars?
It is, uh, it's in my capital to pay from Bay Street to Schofield, at least that section. Beyond from Schofield down to Henry, it's, I would say it's not as bad as she. Uh, but that is in, and then we were looking at. My three streets I'm posting on the Capitol for this year are Flower, um.
You mean a section.
A section of Flower, right. Bay Street to Schofield, and actually Schofield and then Branch Street.
I used to think that too.
Um, and that's actually, Jamie and I talked, he'll be doing work in that area too with water and sewer lines and updating that. Kind of like what we're doing down here on, um, Pine Street and Cedar and Franklin down there. We worked together. He was, they were a street we wanted to do first two years ago, but we couldn't build because of the water and sewer repairs. Now they're being done, we're directing our funding this year to get them streets paid. And then same way with next year, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, Flower Street, Schofield, and, uh, because Maple was already done. So we're doing that three streets in that area.
Anything else?
Mary, we could at some point maybe either, uh, you're in for it or next week we get an update on the A B system, or we aren't, that's probably an option.
The Pinto?
We, we kind of have put it on hold because we're waiting to the town hall renovation. But, I mean, we can proceed with this room for that aspect, if you wish, with the thinking ones, if they were gonna do work in here, then we would have to do it at the same time.
We were also looking at a modified version of the Pinto, maybe the Pinto without cats.
So modified version might be like YouTube versus Facebook.
Yeah, and council member Oris had mentioned that as well. And I think that ultimately that is the goal, because it takes away the use of the platform and having to have an account with Facebook. And it makes it easier for us to link the videos. But right this moment, I think it should be tied with what you're saying as well, like a modified Pinto. And that's been Stacey. And the, uh, we're basically looking at the camera system. That's something that would mount, that would cover the same thing and do away with that. But we also took the money from the A B system and do that to water resources. For, yeah, with water resources, but, uh, we're, we're looking at a budget of zero.
So maybe we don't need to look at such a Christian-based or a contractual-based option.
Right, yeah. We were just looking at hardware. Yeah, we scrapped, uh, we scrapped the, um, guard, guarding.
There are still some aspects of it that would require, um, a, a support contract if you want to be able to do with it, I think, anything beyond what we're doing now.
I think we need another dry lot. Council member Nichols?
I have, I just, I'm looking at two dry lots. Something I was thinking about or that was brought up and discussed and discussed again. Um, speed limits again in the, in the, on the Uplily Streets, Maple Avenue, Schofield Street being twenty-five miles an hour. I know we had discussed it at one point, probably during the listing session or whatever. I don't know how, what, or when that process can be possibly need overlooked again as to how those speed limits can be dropped or whatever. She, I don't know, I can't remember what she said that name. Is it something that can be considered or not? Well, the second point before I forget was, um, everyone's mentioned speed bumps and the most recent one that was brought to my attention was the possibility of the fluid or the liquid speed bump as used in some European countries where if you're really riding the speed limit, it doesn't affect you. But you're going over the speed limit and you're gonna hit it hard. And that, I mean, it's, that's possibly an expensive one, but the concept would work exactly the way that you want it to.
Speed bumps not supposed to be made on actual roadway there. So again, if you're talking about building a, a apartment complex, um, off of a outlet or something like that, that's different, but can't put them down Flower Streets, can't put them on streets like that.
It would require emergency services vehicles to slow way down to go over the speed bump. Well, that's one aspect of it, but it's just not a, you know, a thing.
I'm bringing them to you as they're brought to me, so that I can go in my diligence.
And tell them to call me. Uh, but again, with the, with the speed limits, again, all you have to do is put a proposal and speak with your colleagues, ten, twenty-five on some of those streets. And it's just a decision made by the mayor council.
And it's in the town code. It says that municipal streets are twenty-five, so the justice would be across the board.
Oh, it's gonna identify, identify Uplily or Side Streets. I mean, twenty-five ones for one, great black, it's only a loan. And, you know, I'm saying, as long, boats are all comparable. It doesn't mean that's, it's no reason to rev up the twenty-five at the mouth of Flower Street. Get hurt Schofield Street real hard and land up in the ditch or in public work to the electric company. Something that we, I think we should really consider generally.
Council member Oris? Uh, just real quick, um, I'm gonna bring this up again next, next meeting, but, um, I'm hopeful that perhaps, um, uh, David and Laura can join us for the next meeting, because I'd like to talk or start a discussion or revisit discussion on design standards and the role of the planning commission and what we can do to dive into that a little bit more. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Marie?
I'll just make everyone's like, let's say, no comment.
Comments from the mayor of, uh, eleven is comments from the press. Mary? Thank you for being here. Uh, Vice President Burrell?
Thank you.
All, thank you all.